We're going to call this meeting to order. We are live streaming this. The machine's up and running. And first we'll have a moment of reflection. Okay, thank you. Just on a lighter note, I was gonna have a moment of silence for the leaf fans, but I don't think that's appropriate. Anyway, disclosure of pecuniary interest you can do at this point in time or any point in time through the meeting. And I have an agenda. Anybody want to move that the agenda be approved? I don't believe there's no changes that we know. Moved by Council Kazenberg, second by Council Wilhelm. Those in favor? That's Carrie. Okay. Now I have another one here. The consent agenda. So I have a motion that the council receives a consent agenda items five point one to five point one three and approves the May twentieth two thousand and twenty one council minutes as amended. And I'm gonna let Todd speak to the amendment and then Counselor Callum's gonna move that. But there was Tyler, I mean, we did have a slight couple of changes in the minutes, very minor, but.
Perfect. So through the word, two amendments to mention on the minutes for the May twentieth twenty twenty one council meeting. Number one, Counselor Eggers, which changed to Deputy Warden Eggers for the meeting minutes. And then the second one was Counselor McDermott moved from a nay to a yay on item seven point one point one within the minutes.
Everybody's clear on that? So I had the motion to expose. Does anybody want to see anything pulled out of the consent agenda? Not seeing anything. Counselor Kelly, you want to move that? Perfect. Seconder. Counselor McKenzie. Those in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. And we will move on to public meetings, hearings and delegations. And first up, planning services. So we will need to bring in Susanna's on this one. Morning, Susanna. We're ready for your report on the OPA amendment.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Warden Herson. This is an official plan amendment in the township of Perth East. The property, the application and the owners of the property are Samuel and Mary Zare. The property is located at three nine four two Perth line seventy two. The property, I just have a few slides to show you so to orient you with your property. So you're seeing an air photo of the site now?
Right.
So this is the, the, an air photo of the property. It is, the location is just east of Millbank. It's three nine four two Perth line seventy two at the corner of Perth line seventy two and road one sixteen. It is designated in filling in the Perth County official plan. And it's about nine hundred, nine thousand six hundred and eleven square meters, two point three seven acres. There is a residence on the property now and a small barn. And the owners of the property would like to build an accessory building in order to accommodate and home industrial use. So I just have a sketch provided by the applicant's consultant. So again, this is a subject property. The existing residence a barn and this is the proposed building. So this would be added as a home industrial use. The proposed home industrial use is, would be to process, repackage hay for, to, to prepare hay products for small domestic animals like rabbits and guinea pigs. In addition to family members working at the property, there would be one part-time employees. So the the application has been, that has been submitted is to, is to request a site-specific official plan amendment in order to permit a home industrial use within a infilling designation. As the policy framework in the Perth County official plan does not entertain home industrial uses. So I have a few comments with regards to the policy direction and the provincial policy statement. The provincial policy directs development to rural settlement areas and requires that consideration shall be given to promoting the diversification of, of the economic base on consideration of the rural characteristics, the scale of the development and the provision of appropriate services, things of sewage and water. The property, the proposed development satisfies all these policy requirements. The property is large. It abuts an agricultural field to the north. The volume of traffic will be limited to one truck for delivery and one truck for shipping per week. The applicants have prepared a noise assessment. The noise from the home industrial use will be for, from a hay sorting and bagging machine as well as noise from a diesel generator. The area is considered a class two or a semi-rural area. And the modeling that has prepared, been prepared for the machinery for the home industrial use is not, is not calculated to exceed the noise level requirements at the neighboring sensitive uses, which are the neighbor, the neighbors houses. And it, the development will also diversify the local economy. There was a public meeting held on May eighteenth with the Perth East members of county council. There were no comments received from the public. Perth East council has considered the amendment to the recommendation and is recommending that the OPA one ninety six be approved by county council and the planning department recommends that the application be approved. Available to answer any questions if you'd like.
Thank you, Susanna. Questions for Susanna on this report? Counselor Kazenberg?
Find that on mute button. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Ms. Reed. If I can ask about washroom facilities planned for the, the new structure? Is there something planned there?
Thanks for the questions through you, Warden Herson. I haven't been advised with regards to washroom facilities at the site.
Okay, and, and I suppose the next question is somewhat more delicate. There is an intent to hire a one-part-time employee to work at this environment and the rest is intended to come from the home. I believe that's a matter of policy, is it not? That for a home industry, there is an intent to cap the number of employees from outside the family, if you will, to, you know, one at most kind of thing for the sake of ensuring that this remains a home-based industry?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, so maybe this is a question, one more with regards to business licensing and enforcement, then what provisions are in place in the longer term? And perhaps this is going to be directed to the deputy warden or counselors from Perth East to ensure that in fact only one outside the home employee is employed there?
Would you like me to take this question, Warden Herson?
Well, you can, or Counselor Higgins, Deputy Warden Higgins, or whoever.
Go ahead, Susanna.
Sure, there is, in the Perth East zoning by law, a home industry is defined. And what we would imagine for the subject property is that the zoning for the subject property would limit the number of off-site employees to be able to work on, at the subject property. So the zoning, I would imagine that byline enforcement by parties would be on a compliance basis. So if there was concerns going forward with regards to the number of people who are working there, the authority would be through the Perth East zoning by law to enforce that. And the policy is, the policy that is proposed through OPA one ninety six would provide the direction to the zoning bylaw in order to have that provision.
Thank you. Counselor Hurlick, I seen your hand up once.
And you know what? In regard to washroom there, I know they, it's not a public building. That's why they can get away with no washroom. That's where the area is because it's not a public existing washroom. I know this from family business itself and how it all works.
Counsel, Deputy Warden Eggers?
Just a little further to what Todd was asking. I asked this at Perth East council, how many family members would live in that house as well to be in employment? And at this time, there is three. I'm just wondering for in future, so we're gonna redesignate this land. So say in ten years, another business comes there. How do we control the number of people that can live in that house to be employed on those lands? Is there a policy for that? Or should we be putting on a stipulation of how many people can home to work there?
That would be a tough one.
Would you like me to take this question?
Right.
Through you, Warden Herson, the generally the home industrial definition doesn't restrict the number of people who are employed at at the subject property. The, the language in the home industrial zone provisions is that the family members who live at the subject property are able to work there. And then it limits the number of people who are coming off-site to work at a home industrial facility.
I do.
At the, I guess related is that the home industrial definition in the zoning bylaw requires that it be accessory to the residential use. And that, that is by definition a home industrial use is accessory to the residential use. So the requirement is that at all times when, when one is visiting the property, that it appears that the primary use on the subject property is a residential use and that the home industrial use is secondary to that.
Thank you.
You're good at that, Rhonda?
Yes, I am.
Counselor, your hand moved.
I'm not against it. I just can't believe you can actually call that a home industrial use. It's an industrial use, cut and dried, because home means a home business in a home. That's beside the point. My question is, you have this registered as hamlet village residential. These people have been trying to get their hamlet speed limit reduced for six years I've been on council. If it's zoned hamlet, how come we keep turning them down? In the zoning, they, they've come two or three times to lower the speed limit. And I was just wondering how come if it's actually zoned hamlet? We were always kind of told it was in rule. Susanna?
Would you like me to respond to this, Warden Herson?
Please.
I think there are a couple of questions there. First, perhaps with regards to a home industrial use. The zoning bylaw makes a differentiation between a home occupational use, which is to be located within a residence and a home industrial use, which is to be located outside of a residence. I'm not sure if that assists, but I'm happy to receive additional questions. With regards to the requests that have been made for reducing the speed limit, I'm afraid I'm just learning about that now. So I could, I could follow up with county highways at council's direction. With regards to the home village residential zoning, I appreciate this question. I think that the, the direction that, that this part of the township has on the official plan is slightly different than considering it as a hamlet area or a village area. In fact, it's designated infilling, infilling in the official plan. And then the zoning is hamlet village residential. So I think it will be one of the, one of the parts of the township that's considered with a new county official plan going forward. How to characterize this part of the township? At this point, it has a hamlet village residential zone. And given the, the location of the, of the subject property, that it's adjacent to an agricultural field to the north and that there has been a supportive noise assessment report, it, it seems appropriate for the subject property.
Okay, thank you. So basically now, we're not dealing with speed limits. We're dealing with an official plan amendment. I do have Director McClellan sitting here in place of Lori Wolf today, who's on holidays. So John's gonna maybe check some correspondence, see perhaps what has happened. But the speed limits and the requests and whatnot, so you don't have to follow up on that, Susanna. John's already got the, the word to do that. Anyway, any other questions with regards to the OPA? Okay, I have a motion. The council of the county of Perth received the report, county official plan amendment number one ninety six by Samuel and Mary Zare affecting last described as part lot eighteen concession seven Morningside, part two forty-four R one four oh nine brackets three nine four two line seventy-two Millbank Township of Perth East. And the council approve the application for official plan amendment number one ninety six by Sam and Mary Zare affecting last described as part lot eighteen concession seven Morningside, part two forty-four R one four oh nine thirty-nine forty-two line seventy-two Millbank Township of Perth East. Move by. Counselor Hurlick, do I have a second or? That would be Counselor Ite. Last chance for questions or comments. Those in favor? That's Carrie unanimous with me, but what's that? Okay, thank you very much. We will move on. And next we have, I believe Justin's doing this report, right? Like Susanna? And we have Sally on there, but we didn't need Sally, so. So next we have our cycle tourism development Perth County. And we will have Justin and in all likelihood, Ashley, because any correspondence I got was from Ashley. So we'll just have to wait to get them up on the screen. There's Ashley. And there's Justin.
Morning.
Morning, Justin. Oh, morning, Ashley. Okay, Justin, you're taking this away, or is Ashley gonna do some bit, or?
Yes, so thanks, Warden Herson. So through you and members of council, I'm joined by our tourism officer, Ashley Brocklebank. Today, she is obviously as a tourism officer, leading much of the efforts related to our cycle tourism development and wanted her to be available if there was any questions that I wasn't able to answer. And she also supported writing the report. So happy to be joined by her. So we just wanted to take this opportunity to provide a brief informational report to county council on cycle tourism development in Perth County. As you will be aware, Perth County has joined the Ontario Bike Network for twenty twenty-one to help bolster this county cycle tourism profile. And joining Ontario by bike is really the first step we see in helping to grow cycle tourism in Perth County. So joining the Ontario by bike network has been on our radar for a number of years. And the opportunity to join at the same time as destination staff and same areas will mean that the marketing efforts that go along with this, and most importantly, the visitor experience will be seamless across the entire region. This opportunity also aligns nicely with our current focus on hyperlocal tourism and takes advantage of our existing strong bicycle assets, including our G two G trail, local cycle clubs and other cycle networks that we have here in Perth County. And also access opportunity to draw festival patrons out into exploring the county as an outdoor and naturally socially distanced activity once those crowds start returning. The report outlines some statistics on this growing cycle tourism market from Statscan in twenty eighteen travel survey. And it shows that prior to the pandemic, it was estimated that there was one point six million cycling visits to Ontario accounting for eight hundred ninety-three million dollars in spending. And on average cyclists tend to stay two point six nights longer than noncyclists and spend three hundred fifty-eight dollars more per trip to noncyclists or conventional tourists. So it really is a strong market opportunity that we're looking to take advantage of here in Perth County. As a member of the Ontario by bike network, Perth County will benefit from a dedicated great places to cycle webpage on the website, on the Ontario by bike website, enhance visibility as part of a province-wide association of engaged cycle tourists, as well as the opportunity for Perth County businesses to become Ontario by bike certified and benefit from access to webinars, workshops and toolkits to support their own tourism recovery strategies for bringing residents and visitors into their businesses. Really importantly, the, by us joining as a, as a county, we also help offset that cost for, for local businesses. So they won't be responsible for paying membership fee, which might have been a barrier to them joining that care about bike network. So I'm really pleased about that. Cycle tourism aligned with our current hyperlocal focus in twenty twenty-one and will help position Perth County to take advantage of the strong domestic cycle tourism market over the longer term. We do know that over seventy percent of cycle tourist travel is generated domestically. So regardless of what the border restrictions are, you know, cycle tourism will remain strong this year and into the next year as people maybe are less eager to travel abroad. And then lastly, cycle tourism is a really key component of our own code recovery, particularly because cycle tourism supports some of our hardest hit sectors. So those being accommodations and restaurants. We know the cycle tourists, as I mentioned, stay longer and spend more. And we'd like to see that money flowing into those hard-hit businesses and the accommodation and restaurant sector. So we look forward to extending more information about upcoming events. And in particular, we look forward to assisting our local businesses get Ontario by bike certified and help them tap into this market as part of their own recovery effort. So just want to take this opportunity to provide counsel with the quick update about the opportunity, about kind of our direction and how it aligns our hyperlocal tourism focus and field any questions if there are any.
Thanks, Justin. Questions for either Justin or Ashley? Counselor Kazenberg?
Good morning and thank you, Justin and Ashley, for your work on this, an important file certainly. And exciting to have more tourism opportunities for Perth County and leverage our beautiful system of trails. I'm curious about how the county might be involved with the G two G trail as it goes through a couple of our municipalities. Are there tourism promotion efforts that can be made in, in situ on the trail itself? And have you considered investment at all in, in sort of trail amenities, for lack of a better term, to improve the experience that these tourists who will come here will have?
Yes, maybe I'll, I'll start and maybe hand it over to Ashley. She's been in direct contact with the folk from G two G trail. So I know that we have even before this joining Ontario by bike, but really this has been a catalyst for kind of a reinvigoration of that relationship. And we do definitely have a lot of activities planned throughout the summer as we're able to be outside social distance to help drop people, be at the trail and help drop people off the trail into the local communities. And, you know, pass it off to Ashley. You can talk a bit more about the specific discussions that have been had with the G two G trail leadership.
Sure, thanks, Justin. So in the past, we've been involved with, sorry, the G two G team in a couple of ways to help support the trail. When they do their Canada rides G two G, I believe that takes place in June. In the past, we've sponsored that by setting up tables on the trail, feeding the riders, things like that. So we like to get involved in those sponsorship opportunities. Beyond that, we're in contact with G two G right now. They're submitting a grant program to improve accessibility of their trailheads. So we're offering support to them in that, as well as we're, we're leaning on them heavily as we start to develop these signature routes and, and work to develop our cycle tourism. Because I'm not a cyclist, so we've been leaning on them heavily to figure out the best ways to, to get this rolling and to send people to the trail.
Thanks, Ashley. Any other questions? Counselor McDermott?
No, it was a great report. I, I hope this is very successful. I was just wondering when they have the, the numbers on like how much people spend and that type of stuff? Would that be more in an urban area more than in a rural area? Like, would that be where they get most of their statistics from? I was just wondering where they, where they get them from? That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe the, the numbers that I quoted, those came from Ontario by bike. So I, I think it's a provincial statistic, so a mix of urban and rural. So I don't think it's segregated in that way, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Got to make sure I get all the faces checked before I move on here. No, great report, Justin and Ashley. So I just have one little comment and I've really noticed that here is since the weather's got a little nicer. So I live on a very busy road, Perth line twenty. And I have actually seen more cyclists out on that road than ever. But there's one thing that does concern me, and I don't know how you would deal with this, whether you just port it on, port it on to the cycle association? But very few riders actually wear reflective gear or anything, and it'll get close to dusk at night. And they aren't that overly obvious if you're driving into the sun. So I'm not sure whether they shouldn't have some sort of reflective gear. And my wife has actually made the same comment, like it's, they're hard to see closer to dusk and they just don't have any reflection or any flashing lights on their bikes. But I have seen it every day. There's just bikes going past my place to know when, which is pretty well attributable to what you just presented to us. Anyway, just a comment. I don't know if you could pass that on or what, but.
Yeah, I think by joining the Ontario by bike network, there might be an opportunity for some bicycle, bicycle safety webinars and workshops that might be offered through that network. So hopefully that will help address some of that problem.
Perfect. Thank you. Anything else? I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the cycle tourism developed in Perth County report for information. Move by. Counselor Matt Duncan, second by Counselor Darrell Hurlick. Those in favor? That would be Carrie. Thank you very much. Thanks, Justin, and thanks, Ashley. And we're gonna move on. To corporate services. And we're starting with Betty Jo with the Perth Archive Disaster Prevention and Response Plan. And there's Betty on the screen. There's Betty. Okay, Betty, thank you. We're ready for your report here.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Warden and council and colleagues. Start off by saying that Cindy Cinco sends her apologies to everyone that she could not be here this morning. I'm sorry to have to tell you that her father passed away recently. So she's spending some time with her family this week. It was Cindy who did the vast majority of the research. I'm just gonna share my screen with you now so I can take you through some slides. Apologies. Okay. So as I said, it was Cindy who did the vast majority of the work on our, on our disaster plan and that you have in your agenda package. And around the same time as Cindy was working on this project, county facility supervisor Nick Larson was creating a fire safety plan for the archives. So that's now been approved by the Perth East Fire Department, and I'm so grateful to both of them for the comprehensive information and instructions that they've pulled together to protect the archive's collection, staff and clients. Because having such plans in place is, is so important to our operations. To quote John Hunter from the U S National Park Service, "Good planning can prevent an emergency from turning into a disaster and a disaster from turning into a tragedy." The archive's first formal disaster plan was created in two thousand and eight by a co-op student from Fleming College. When we moved into the new building, a summer student from Western updated it. And what you're seeing on your screen is the newspaper article that she wrote about her project. The current version of the plan is greatly expanded from what the students created and addresses all three phases in the disaster cycle, prevention, response and recovery in great detail. Prevention consists of big things, big picture things like having the state-of-the-art facility that we do have with environmental controls and security systems in place. It also means having day-to-day routine. It also means having day to day routines like regular cleaning, which reduces the likelihood of things like mice coming into the building and then nesting in the box of documents in our collections room. Having a plan and being in a state of readiness on what to do if something does go wrong, as our friend from the National Park Service pointed out, helps to prevent an emergency. Like a water leak in the collections room from spiraling into into a disaster like a full on mold outbreak. Another part of the prevention stage is staff training. So what you're seeing here are pictures from around twenty ten, when we all went out to Fullerton Hall with the Provincial Archives Advisor to practice how we would deal with wet records. What you're seeing here is a similar training exercise, but in twenty nineteen at the new buildings. And Cindy and I were even able to do online training at home to practice this stuff during the pandemic. We took a course from the Archives Association of British Columbia that involved them mailing us a box full of of records that had been culled from collections. That we then had to put in our bathtubs and deal with them using the supplies and the facilities that we had to work with. So in this case, that was my family room and Cindy's kitchen. Prevention is the best place to be in the disaster cycle, however, things do go wrong. And then we would move into the response phase. So what you're seeing here are some slides from the beginning of twenty twenty. We did have some condensation on an air duct in the collections room, resulting in some records getting wet. Here you see them being spread out on tables around the building, including in the lunchroom. So that wax paper and paper towels from our disaster kits could be put in between the pages while they dried. At this point, we had moved to the recovery phase, and you can see on the cart in the collections room. Books being left out to dry with the papers being changed once or twice a day for several weeks until they could be re shelved. Finally, having a disaster plan, a disaster preparedness and response plan allows the archives to be a resource for local municipal offices. Libraries and museums should they experience a disaster affecting records or cultural property. As a member of the Archives Emergency Response Network, Stratford Perth Archives is also part of a larger community of mutual support. That can request assistance or offer it to similar institutions around southwestern Ontario. So thank you for your time today. I'd be happy to respond to any questions or concerns that you may have about the updated disaster plan.
Okay, if we could go back to full screen, that would be lovely. Perfect. Okay, questions for Betty Jo? Councillor Deputy Ward Nick Eggers.
Just a couple of comments about the emergency procedures. I'm a little surprised to see in it that if there's an emergency that the staff would go and gather their personal belongings and leave the building, especially if there's fire. I always thought if there was a fire, you'd get out as fast as you can, not go find your purse and your phone and whatever else. And the other thing, the spelling of the word mold, I'm not sure. If it's American spelling or what, but it's spelled M O L D and it's spelled M O U L D. And I believe the correct spelling should be M O L D. There's a whole section on mold. It's mentioned several times in the in the document.
Through through Warden. I would have to take a close look at the the instructions for leaving the building in a fire councillor, and I think you raised a good point. We'll take a look at that and see if we need to make it clear to staff that. In the event of a fire, the the priority is obviously leaving the building, not making sure that you have your your personal items with you, certainly. And the mold mold spelling, I think what you're seeing there is a is a relic of several writers working on the document over over a few years. I do see it spelled both ways in the professional literature, but we'll we'll pick a horse and ride it on that one and and make sure that there's no no confusion there. So thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councillor Willhout.
Yes, Betty Jo, I see that there's a number of times it's mentioned about printed copies and. And where they're located. Should there not be also a digital copy someplace to access in case of emergency? And I'm pretty sure if there's a fire, firemen don't necessarily want to run in the building and get a printed copy out. So I just wonder if there's digital in there too someplace.
Yes, the the fire plan itself is on the is on the county's SharePoint page. We'll archive staff have access to a digital copy of this. It's on our network. And we'll make sure that the entire plan is is put up on a on a higher level than that as well for everyone to have a copy of. Thank you for that.
Other questions or comments? Not seeing any. Perfect. Okay, I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the M S S C report. For Stratford Perth Archives and Disaster Prevention and Response Plan, C S two oh two one. Report for information and council approves the report for submission. To M S S C meeting of June the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one. Move by. Councillor McKenzie, seconded by. Oh, Councillor Eggers, sorry, I just keep screening around. So move by Councillor McKenzie, seconded by Deputy Warden Eggers. Last chance for comments or questions. Those in favor? That's carried. Perfect. Thanks, Betty Jo.
Thank you.
And next, we're going to move on to P O A. And I believe we'll have Linda come on. Linda. Oh, there we are.
Good morning, morning councillors.
We're ready for you.
Great. I have an operational update. We have an M S S C meeting in a couple of weeks, so I need your approval before I move on with them. We continue to have court appearances by remote only. We've been migrated all of our court appearances to Zoom, so we were doing some telephone some Zoom. We have successfully completed our court verification process. And June fifteenth, we'll be holding our first Zoom trials. There's no in person court appearances in the foreseeable future. Every person who calls our office is encouraged to use one of the several remote. Options for payment for filing documents rather than coming into the building in person. Those who simply have no other options, no access to technology and so forth, still can come in using the screening at the back door. So I've also included you with totals for the charges filed to the end of April. And fines collected to the end of April. It looks like we're returning to pre COVID numbers, but it's still early in the year. The distribution of revenues been calculated. It seems to be pretty much on track. Hopefully, like I'm optimistic that things continue in this pattern. This has been very challenging, moving something that is so historically in person. And requiring people to attend before a justice of the peace in person to a completely different format. But my staff are just doing a wonderful job of it. I can't say enough about how proud I am of them. Oh, that is my very short report, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Linda. Questions for Linda on this report? I don't see any hands going up. I miss a hand, just showed it. Anyway, I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives the P O A Court Services report. For M S S C report for information. And the Perth County Council approves the report for submission to the M S S C meeting on June the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one. Moved by Councillor McDermott, seconded by Councillor Wellhout. Those in favor? Carrie. Perfect. Thanks, Linda.
Thank you.
And we're going to move on. Paramedic services. We're pleased to have Mike Adair sitting here, albeit socially distanced. But anyway, Mike, take it away.
Yeah, thank you and through the warning. Good morning, everybody. This is our M S S C report to be brought forward in two weeks. And so we are committed to bringing it forward to you. Have an opportunity to ask any questions or make any changes prior to us presenting this next meeting. This report, much of the information that's within here, you're already aware of and. But it's an opportunity to bring it forward to our all of our partners in the M S S C setting. It was Paramedic Services Week, so I want to thank council and the warden for recognizing that last meeting. And I mentioned that in here. I mentioned that the call volume in quarter one, just as a monitoring statistic, has had a slight increase to pre COVID. Call volumes. I talked a little bit about the response to COVID nineteen and the activities that we're doing. And council is well aware of all of these activities and certainly I'm open to questions today if you have any. The ambulance order, so we do have one ambulance on order this year. Because of a shortage in electronic parts. It looks like we are going to be delayed and we may not receive that ambulance to the following year. And we're going to come back with maybe a bit of a strategy to counsel. So that we're not in the same situation next year when we're placing the next ambulances. So stay tuned for that. Mobile connectivity is part of our business plan this year, and we're moments away. From hearing back from the ministry on some funding as we submitted an application to the modernization funding. We're hoping that we're successful in that application, which will help to save some costs for the county. Mobile Integrated Health, this is the exact same report that you received during the last council meeting. But we thought it would be good to share with our municipal partners, in particular St Mary's and also Stratford. Since last council meeting, our new hires have started, they started on the road this week. And a job well done by our hiring team. So there's ten new part time paramedics that are part of the Perth County family. Social media account has been relaunched, and I've put two links there. One is a Twitter link and one's a Facebook. So if you're interested in following us, we certainly would welcome that. And finally, I touch on the M S S C report, just what we're doing with respect to mental wellness for. Our paramedics and some of the activities that are going on there, because it's the investment that was. A commitment that happened in twenty nineteen, and we're seeing it through now in terms of expanding our peer response team and providing them providing them some training. And so with that, that summarizes what we were bringing forward to the M S S C for on June seventeenth. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you very much, Mike. Questions or comments for Director Mike? Not seeing any. So I know that Mike's been involved with something a little extra. Through Metabee, and that was to deal with pop up clinics and stuff. So maybe just give them just a quick cold snow's version of what we did. And as far as the Olympic athletes and stuff. Just that, just Mike's been extremely busy. One night he texted me at nine thirty, he was on his way home. From work and wanted to know if I could chat, and I quit answering my phone after nine o'clock. So I didn't get that till the next morning, but he's been extremely busy, but he has been involved in a lot of things. And just to show you the value of our EMS service here in Perth County.
Yeah, sure, I certainly can touch on some of that. We. Metabee has been working with the Province of Ontario as well as Red Cross. To provide pop up clinics in the GTA, the Greater Toronto Area, York Region. Durham. Yeah, Peel Region as well, to support some of the vaccine efforts that are ongoing. And so it's been a good experience and we continue to. Work with paramedics, nurses and near future pharmacists to help provide those vaccines to get all of us back to work. And back to school and to remain healthy. So that's what's going on there. And I certainly was honored to be part of being able to get that up and running in a short order. And that's where we're at.
Perfect. Thanks, Mike. Okay, last chance for questions for Mike. Okay, I have a motion here. Perth County Council reads the receives the M S S C Paramedicine. Paramedic Services Update June. Update June update report for information and Perth County Council approve the distribution. Of the M S S C Paramedic Services Update June update for the M S S C meeting on June the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one. Moved by Councillor Casenberg, seconded by. Councillor Deputy Ward Eggers. Last chance for questions or comments. Those in favor? That's carried unanimously. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Did you get to meet the premier?
No.
Okay.
He was sitting. He was sitting that day.
All right. Okay, Public Works Capital Maintenance, Pavement Prevention Program. I do have. Director John sitting beside me, but I believe Mr Wilson's going to give this report. We have Bill on there now, so. Thanks, Bill. You're good to go.
Okay, thank you and good morning, Warden Aitson and members of council. The report before you today is with regards to the twenty twenty one capital maintenance program. Which targets the pavement preservation of the county road network. It is, as council is aware, it's a operating budget. It's funded through the operating budget. And what we had budgeted on for this year's work was. Perth Road one thirty nine from St Mary's out to Prospect Hill. And it was budgeted based on using a micro surfacing pavement preservation treatment. So further to that, we did, we went out and did some site inspections out on out on the road. And went through some of the the past construction history of that road. And after some internal discussions with that regard, we had decided that the the most appropriate treatment for that road section. Would actually be a surface asphalt overlay on it, rather than a micro surfacing. The the reason, probably the main reason for that is the the existing composition of that road. It was recycled, I believe, back in two thousand and nine, and then it was it was surfaced with hot mixed asphalt at that time. However, the thickness of the recycling combined with the surface overlay is around one hundred and twenty to one hundred and twenty five millimeters thick. We would like to see that particularly on that road, since it is a full load road. We would rather see that structure around the one hundred and fifty or greater to improve the structure of it. With a micro surfacing, we we wouldn't get that. The micro would, you know, take care of minor wheel wheel rutting on the road. But it wouldn't actually provide any structural strength in addition to that. So that's the option that we are, we are kind of looking at or recommended that that we pursue on that. And with that, we would rather transfer that program into the capital program and do that work in twenty twenty two. In conjunction with work that is planned in the area. We have Perth line eight planned for next year. And I believe there may be some other local work that Perth South is looking at doing in that area as well. So it lends well to that, to to fit in that program. And with regards to the pavement preservation through the operating budget. We would be looking to return those funds that were budgeted this year for that program back into the capital roads reserve. And then, as mentioned, fund the surface overlay as a capital project for twenty twenty two. And then continue with the pavement preservation program as laid out for the following years. So we wouldn't necessarily. We wouldn't necessarily be losing a year on the, uh, the preservation efforts for the road network. Uh, we'd rather be. As I said, moving this project into the capital work for next year and then continuing on with the pavement preservation for the roads that are targeted. Uh, for the subsequent years being twenty twenty-two as planned. Um. I think that covers most of the, uh, items in the report here and. If there's any questions on that from council, I'd be, uh, happy to, happy to answer them.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, questions for Bill on this report? No questions, no comments? I don't see any hands up. I have a motion Perth County Council receives the two thousand and twenty-one. Capital Maintenance Pavement Preservation Program Report for Information. Moved by Counselor Callum, seconded by Counselor Duncan. Those in favor? Carrie, perfect. Thanks, Bill.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Council reports. Does anyone have anything for council reports? Not seeing any hands. Okay, I have a bylaw. But bylaw three eight two four dash two thousand and twenty-one be read a first, second and third time. And finally pass this third day of June, two thousand and twenty-one, and that is your bylaw for the O P A. Amendment moved by. Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? Carried. Perfect. Moving on. Notice emotions. I don't believe we have any. No? Okay, uh, other business. Not seeing any hands. Announcements. Do we have any announcements? I just have one quick announcement to make. We did lower the flag to half mass on Monday morning, early. In honor and recognition of what transpired in Kamloops, B C. It was a horrible thing. Unfortunately, I'm sure we're gonna hear more about those in the future. Anyway, so it is down. So I had a couple of people ask me if it wasn't it. Yes, it is. We put it down early Monday morning. Anyway, uh, closed session and reporting out. We don't have one. I have a confirmatory bylaw. That bylaw three eight two five dash two oh two one being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council. Of the Corporation of the County of Perth and its regular meeting held June third, two thousand and twenty-one. Is read a first, second and third time and finally passed June third, two thousand and twenty-one. Move by. Counselor Duncan, seconded by Counselor McKenzie. Those in favor? That's carried. Perfect. And the best part, not necessarily, but the council meeting. I have a motion, the council meeting adjourned at nine fifty-four A M. Move by. Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor Casenberg. Those in favor? Carrie, thank you very much.